I call this meeting of the Onslow County Board of Education to order. Good evening and thank you for joining us today. I'd like to ask Reverend Jack Marshman of Tarlanding Baptist Church to come to the podium where he will deliver our invocation. Reverend, thank you for coming.
Pray with me, please. Almighty God, Maker of heaven and earth, we thank you this evening that in your creative genius you gave us the capacity to learn, the ability to study and to comprehend, that we might apply our lives and that the time we have would be meaningful and productive and beneficial not only to ourselves, to our families, but to our fellow man. And Lord, it is to this board that the citizens of this county have entrusted a very sacred responsibility, and that is the educating of our children, of our youth. It is a daunting task. It is beyond their ability. And I pray for them. I pray for all who work with them as they lead in this great challenge of raising up the next generation. I pray that you'll bless them. We pray that our children, the students that walk into the halls of all these schools, might ever learn what is true so that mentally they will be sharp, what is good, that morally they might be strong. We pray for all who work in our school system. We pray for our students, for it's a day that we must ever pray for their well-being, for their safety. We ask you to watch over them, keep them well. Bless the deliberations of this very evening and any decisions that must be made. May they be good choices, may it be helpful. And so, Lord, we offer to you our service, and we pray that you'll be honored and glorified. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Will you stand and face the flag and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is to approve the agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion made.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next, approval of the consent agenda. You see there about eight, eight things, seven or eight things under there. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Next is the good news spotlight. We always really enjoy this because it highlights wonderful things that are going on throughout our school system. So at this time, I'd like to call our Chief of Communications, Beth Folger, to begin our recognition. Doctor, I'm sorry, I didn't give you a title.
You know, I'll go by whatever you call me these days. So, Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Stow, good evening. I'm very excited that I get to share the good news spotlight this evening and super excited that we have families here and students that we're lifting up and recognizing for our public. These are the students that really tell our stories in our school district. So first, I would like to talk about or share with you the highlight of two Swansboro High School students, Grace Frazier and Alexandria Chadwick, who are among the elite group of students chosen to receive a scholarship to attend the Francis Hesselbain Student Leadership Program offered at the United States Military Academy at West Point. It was offered last fall. So Grace and Alexander, will you please come forward with your principal, Ms. Chris Andre? Come over here so we can all see you. So established by the Military Child Education Coalition in 2006, the five-day program focuses on leadership, character development, team building, goal-setting, resilience, community involvement, and leaders in action, and helps students develop the skills to apply when they're, while they're learning. Through personal small group exercises led by the MCEC and Academy faculty and cadets, the students gain confidence, competence, and commitment to return to their campuses ready to share with fellow students, to be leaders themselves. No more than 24 sophomores and juniors active in their local student-to-student programs are chosen to participate each year. Full tuition was included, including transportation, lodging, meals, program materials, et cetera, and an opportunity for a lifetime these youngsters have had. Having two of our students selected in Onslow County Schools has never happened before. So the program was named for Francis Hesselbain, and I hope I'm saying that right. Hesselbine. I had a 50/50 chance. Hesselbine, in recognition of her dedication to the development of children and youth. Hesselbine is the chairman of the Board of Governors of the Leader-to-Later Institute. Many of us have heard of that. And she's the former CEO of the Girl Scouts of America. She was awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom, the United States' highest civilian honor, in 98, and in 2002, she was the first recipient of the Eisenhower National Security Series Award for her service with the U.S. Army. So ladies, we definitely congratulate you on your achievements. I know, Ms. Andre, you're so proud to have two of these students at your school, and I think we would be remiss if we didn't recognize the parents too and recognize Mr. and Ms. Frazier and Mr. and Ms. Chadwick, who are here this evening. If you could just stand. Thank you. (APPLAUSE). Board, next, I'd like to recognize Carrie Dean, who's now a freshman at Dixon High School and who was awarded third place at the national level of Modern Woodman of America's 2015 School Speech Contest. And she's the daughter of Mr. and Ms. John Huber, if they're in, and I believe they are here, so if we could recognize them for the fine role that they've played in their daughter's life as well. (APPLAUSE). Carrie, if you and the teachers who helped you with your speech, Ms. Edwards, Ms. Brown, and also Dixon Middle School Principal, Ms. Lee Bazell, and Joe Adcock from Woodman of America, please come up. You see, we really do believe it takes a village to raise a child. A lot of support for our students. So the topic for the contest was an interesting landmark. Students could choose to describe the landmarks: history, location, physical characteristics, or impact on individuals and communities. From my understanding, Carrie chose the John F. Kennedy Eternal Flame, and she delivered her speech in a unique way. She spoke as if she were the flame itself, noting the importance of the flame and the man whose grave it memorializes. In her speech, she said, "I will burn forever on, launching not missiles, but hope, dedication, and passion to the people of your nation. I am burning to prove that even though the man is gone, the hope he gave you isn't." Ms. Adcock, if you will, please present the plaques.
This is for you, Miss Lady. Thank you. And I would just like to add that Ms. Carrie Dean won third place out of 90,000 participants across the United States. So that's a huge, huge accomplishment. (APPLAUSE). And we'd also like to thank Dixon Middle School for their participation. Onslow County Schools has been participating in this school speech contest for over 15 years. They always send someone to nationals. So these ladies here do a phenomenal job with the kids. They bring them in, when I've emceed some of these contests, they bring them in at the fourth grade level to give them an idea of what to expect in the fifth grade through eighth grade levels. So they do a local contest, they do a state contest, and then they do a national contest. And in addition to Carrie's plaque, she gets a $1,000 savings plan to be, to start her education, her formal education after secondary. So thank you for your participation, and this is for your school. I appreciate it.
(APPLAUSE). Oh, pictures, I'm sorry. While they're having their picture taken, I would like to also note a special thanks to Joanne Adcock, who has sponsored the local contest for Woodman of America. So thank you for your partnership with the school district.
I appreciate it.
Well, I've been here less than two months, and there's one thing I've learned, and I've learned that we have a certain member of our executive staff or our cabinet that tends to get lots of awards. So we're going to continue that tradition tonight, and I'd like to invite our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Holloman, to join me and Mr. Stow at the podium. So I am proud to announce that Onslow County Schools has recently received two distinguished recognitions for financial management for the fiscal year 2014. The first award is the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented by the Association of School Business Officials. It is the highest recognition for school district financial operations. We would expect no less from you, Mr. Holloman. This program reviews district accounting practices as represented by the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and it commends school districts that adhere to sound principles and reporting procedures. A district earning the Certificate of Excellence has demonstrated its credibility in financial management for the school system. So congratulation on this first award. I think this one's made of pure gold. The second award is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented by the Government Finance Officers Association. This award is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. We would expect no different from you, Mr. Holloman. It represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. Now here, hold on to your seats. This is the 12th consecutive year that the Onslow County Board of Education and Mr. Holloman has earned these two prestigious awards. I'd like to commend Mr. Holloman and his dedicated staff for their continued outstanding management of our financial resources. A big round of applause.
Thank you, Dr. Folger. Now I'll ask Dr. Eason, our Associate Superintendent of Instructional Services, to present the scholarship report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Stow. If you will take a look at your good news report for this evening, I would like to call your attention to the high school scholarship report. Included in that report, you will see data that ranges from the 2012, 2013 school year all the way up to last school year with our total scholarship amounts for the 2014, 2015 school year. Just a couple of highlights from that scholarship scoreboard. The first thing that I would like to share with you is, as you look at our trend data in terms of scholarships over the last three years, what you will see with five of our seven high schools is a steady increase every year from 2012 to 2013 to 2014, '15. The second thing that I would like to share with you from our scholarship data is that some of the scholarship dollar amounts from some of our high schools, when you look at it across a three-year trajectory, really is most impressive. I'd like to share with you that in 2012, '13 Jacksonville High School's graduating seniors totaled scholarship winnings of $781,513. In 2014, '15, that number at Jacksonville High School was all the way up to $2,746,000. I'd also like to call your attention to Dixon High School. In 2012, 2013, those seniors received $807,900. And if you'll look at the 14, '15 total, you will see that Dixon High School for last year was at $2,271,732. And last but not least, I will also call your attention to Dixon High School for last year in the 12, '13 school year, I'm sorry, White Oak High School. In 12, '13, they were right at $1 million with $998,925. And in the 14, '15 school year, White Oak High School students received $2,793,700. So as you can see, when you look cumulatively across our school system, we have seen our students in the last three years double their scholarship earnings. 12, '13, the Onslow County School System graduating seniors had just over $6 million. And during 2014, '15, our graduating seniors, the class of 2015, had as a district $13,176,784. I would be remiss if I did not give special recognition to all of our high school staffs, to all of our administrators at the high school level, to all of our school counselors, and most importantly this evening, if we happen to have any of our graduates from 2015 out in TV land, I hope they have had a great beginning to their freshman year in college, and we just want them to know that the Onslow County School System is very, very proud. So thank you for the opportunity, and Madam Chair, that is our good news for this evening.
Thank you. That's wonderful, wonderful. I know those parents are appreciative too of that extra money that's coming in to help with that education. Do any of the board have any comments they'd like to make during the good news spotlight? School's getting started, and we have football season and bands and all types of things going on, soccer, volleyball. So I know that there are a lot of opportunities for you to join our schools and see some exciting things, and we will be reporting more as we continue our meetings during this coming year. We do not have anyone who signed up for the public comment session, and if you're here just for the good news spotlight and you would like to leave, this would be a good time for you to make your departure. We'd love for you to stay. We could be quite entertaining, but we understand that you might have other things on your plate for this evening. Thank you for coming.
Homework.
Homework. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is there's a vacancy on the North Carolina School Board Association's Board of Directors, and every board member received a letter concerning that. At this time, only one member of our board has expressed any real interest in it and has the time to devote to attending that. So I would like to suggest that to the board and request that someone put forward a motion to accept, to nominate Mr. Earl Taylor for this position. He's indicated that he has the time, the energy, and he certainly does have the skills that would carry forth between this board and the School Board Association.
Madam Chair, I make a nomination that Mr. Taylor be identified as filling that vacancy to the North Carolina School Board Association Board of Directors.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments that anyone would like to make? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And congratulations, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
And we'll let you know if you don't do a good job.
I'm sure you will.
The next is the resolution for the Dixon Middle School funding. I asked Steve Myers, our Chief of Operations, to come forward, and also would like to recognize that we have with us the county attorney, Ms. Moxley, as well as the finance director, David McCool.
David McCool. Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, Mr. Stow. Onslow County Local Government has requested that the Board of Education consider a resolution approving an agreement concerning Dixon Middle School, approving certain other documents and actions relating thereto, and authorizing certain actions in connection therewith. This resolution and other documents, which include an agreement concerning Dixon Middle School and a lease agreement, are forms and proceedings recommended by the county's 2015 local obligation bond attorneys in order to obtain the necessary funding for the new Dixon Middle School. Included in your package is the resolution that I mentioned, and if the board desires, I'll read it into the record.
Does anyone on the board need for him to read that?
No.
Anyone?
Okay.
We're fine.
And as Ms. Thomas also mentioned, the county attorney, Ms. Moxley, and the county Chief Financial Officer, Mr. McCool, are also present to answer any questions that you may have. So at this time, staff would ask that the board consider a motion to approve the resolution approving an agreement concerning Dixon Middle School, approving certain other documents and actions relating thereto, and authorizing certain actions in connection therewith as presented.
Since we'd like to have some discussion on this, I would ask that we have a motion first to accept the resolution, to entertain it.
I make a motion to accept the resolution.
There's a second. Okay, now floor is open for any discussion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a few questions I'd like to ask, and it may be that we need to bring up the county attorney or the county finance director to answer those, but let me ask you first.
Okay.
The agreement basically is going to be a financing agreement for three pieces of new construction, or new projects. Is that correct?
I believe that. So if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Mr. McCool up here to verify the answers that I may give. Three projects?
Yes. Yes, good evening, Board. It's three projects that will be financed.
Okay, well, welcome to our meeting tonight. Appreciate you coming. The three projects are going to be, basically, we're going out for a bond, is that correct?
Yeah, limited obligation bond.
And I believe in earlier meetings at the county commissioners' meetings, it was discussed it's going to be a $57 million bond, is that correct?
That was a not-to-exceed amount.
A not-to-exceed amount.
Yes, we always put a little bit of a buffer in because we don't, you know, we have bit, we have projections, but until the bids come in, you really don't know how much you're going to need to finance, so.
But the maximum amount of the bond that we're going out for is 100 million, is that correct?
No, we've just been approved by the LGC, actually today. It's going to be between around, a little bit over 52, between 52 and 53 million is what we're going to be borrowing for our financing.
So the agreement before us is 57 million, is it not?
Again, keep in mind, that's a not-to-exceed amount.
Okay.
So when we put that in there, again, we don't, we don't know, we have an idea how much it's going to cost from our architect, but until the bids come in, we really can't, you have to have that buffer, because if bids could come in at, say, 56 million, then you would need that amount to borrow. So you give yourself a little bit of leeway and flexibility in case things come in a little bit more than you expect from the architectural perspective, and also, you know, you have the option to do reengineering. So the board felt comfortable with a not-to-exceed amount, our board, the county board, not-to-exceed amount of 57 million. And then we would have to do reengineering from there if the bids came in higher than we expected. A good example, Dixon Middle School came in around, was it, 3 million under bid? So, you know, we were able to borrow less because of that.
Back in May, the school board had another issue that was in collaboration with the county commissioners with regards to refinancing another bond initiative, and that was also about 100 million maximum at that time on a $36 million project, is that correct?
No, we did two advanced refundings, and they involve school, they involve some financing that, that had some school financing projects involved with that.
And we put in Metta View School, I believe, as collateral for that.
Correct, yes, yes. At a savings of around, present value savings was around 3.2 million, actual cash savings was around 4.5 to 4.6 million.
So bundling projects gets us a lower interest rate?
Oh, most definitely, most definitely. The more you can bundle, and it also saves money on the financing costs, too.
Okay.
If you had to go out to finance each of these projects separately, you would be, well, with three, well, the two main projects are the Consolidated Human Services Building and the Dixon Middle School. The vehicle maintenance is a smaller amount, so if you were to do those two projects separately, you would be doubling your financing costs. And so from economic standpoint, you're saving money on your financing cost, and by going to market with a larger dollar amount, you have a higher, a better opportunity to get a better interest rate.
Okay, so the deal that we're discussing this evening has no connection with the deal that we discussed back in May.
Oh, no.
They're two separate bond initiatives.
The one that we talked with the advan, that was advanced refunding, yes. We're looking to, it's no different than, say, refinancing your house with the mortgage rates, it was, it's a little more complicated.
Okay. The only concern I have here in these deals that we're doing currently is that we're refinancing your house, or my house, and building yours. Otherwise, when we put these projects together, our properties, the school district's properties are the only ones that are going up as collateral.
Well, you need to keep in mind, if we did do these separate, say, if we did do them separate, we'd be paying, again, twice the financing cost, and then we would also still have to put up Dixon Middle School as collateral, because that would be a separate deal by itself.
However, if we bundled more than one school project together, wouldn't we have the same financing agreement, the same advantages?
Same advantages.
If we bundled the Dixon and the Richlands together, and I don't know that that's possible, because I know that on August 17th, the Board of Commissioners agreed, and I'm sure that some people here were in attendance at that meeting as well, but during that process, it was another financing agreement that was tentatively approved. There was a public hearing, and we're going to build a new courthouse, and we're going to build a new school out in Richlands, and we probably need both of them. We bundled those two projects together. Wouldn't it have been just as easy to bundle two schools and build two schools and then build all of the projects that you've got at the county level together and bundle those and submit them?
Well, again, it's all timing, too, of when you're going to do the financing. The board came to us saying they had a need to build Dixon Middle School with the timeframe that was set, set forth by the board.
We have, we have a, we have a need to build several schools.
Yeah.
But with the agreement that we have with the county, that's been prolonged out a period of time. There was a board agreement, I believe, a year and a half, almost two years ago, between the two boards, that we would set up a schedule, and we would build schools on a particular scheduled timeframe. And we appreciate the fact that we were able to move this one up. I just have some concerns that the appearance is that our collateral, our properties are being used to finance the county projects.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't see it in that light, to be quite honest with you, sir. I respect your opinion, but keep in mind, if we did do separate financings, we would be using Dixon Middle School as collateral.
Sure.
So, you know, if we want to do separate, we still, we have to use it as collateral. And again, we'd be paying twice the cost for financing costs. There's also, you got, there's another thing that you have to keep in mind, one of the rating agencies requires you, like, this deal is going to roughly be between about 52 to 53 million dollars. Moody's requires us to have at least, the collateral that we put up has to be at least 50% of the borrowing. Now, the Consolidated Human Services Building is going to be around 20.5 million, all said and done, so we wouldn't have enough collateral to be able to meet that criteria by Moody's. So that's why we're using Dixon Middle School. No other reason than that.
Let me address that issue for just a second, because the tax rate on the property that we're going to build Dixon Middle School, currently, the Onslow County tax rate on that is about 600,000. We purchased 10 acres for $800,000 back in 2007, and we donated another 30 for a total of 40 acres, I believe, for total price of $800,000. The current tax rate, because of the economy or the differences in the recent assessments that were out there, it's valued at about 600,000. So I'm concerned how we're able to afford, or how the bond company is going to give us money to build three projects worth 52 million on a property that's worth 600,000.
Well, no, they're going to take in account the value of the actual building. So the actual, the actual, once we construct the building, the value of the land and the building is going to be valued at a heck of a lot more. So when you combine the land and the construction, that's what enables us to put that up for collateral and meet the 50% criteria as required by Moody's.
The email that we got back from Bond Council today, or actually, I believe it may have come in Friday, or I'm not sure when it came in, may have come in today, or yesterday, I believe it actually was, was received there, basically said, and to answer my initial question, whether or not we're going to use this bond for additional construction of schools or Onslow County, additional projects, et cetera, et cetera, and was told that, basically, it could be, if we went up to 100 million, it could be going up to that. Is that, that's correct? But since the, who is it, the local government council?
A local government commission.
Local government commission, as capped at.
Well, we went to them with the source, we do what. Well, we went to them with the source, we do what is, once we have all their bids in hand, and all the permits are in place, and we actually know what this is, what the cost of the prop, what the cost of each project's going to be, then we actually come up with what I would say a hardcore number, sources and uses, and that, that's what determines that 52 and 1/2.
Okay.
It's around 52 to 53 million, roughly, how, once, once you add in premium and the financing side of it. So it's, that's what determines how much we're going to borrow.
Okay.
In the end, you know, they're not going to want us to borrow, obviously, 100 million when we only need, you know, 52 and 1/2 million, so...
All right, I understand that. Now, going forward on the next project, I assume that the county will be coming back to us within the next few weeks on the finance agreements and doing the documentation, similar to what we're doing this evening for the project at Richlands?
There'll be a time schedule set up, I don't know exactly what, what board meeting that will be done at, in terms of getting the financing part of it. There's quite a ways aways. I know that the planning on that and what we put in our debt capacity model to be able to pay for this was to go to the market, and this is all preliminary conversation right now, because we're still a little ways off. Not that, actually, before you know it, we'll be here, but probably July, go to the LGC, and then, well, get approval on the LGC agenda in early August, and then go to the market shortly thereafter, factoring in the Richlands Elementary School along with the, with the courthouse. But again, this, we're still in the architectural planning phases on, well, on some, a lot of it still, so on, once we get a hardcore, an actual...
I believe yesterday, our architectural contracts were supposed to be in at 5:00 PM, were they not?
Yeah.
All right. So going forward on to the Richlands project, then, are the county, or is the county commissioners' going to go with a similar deal that we've had for these last two, with the Dixon Middle and the Meadowview financing agreements, that our property's going to be the sole property put up for that one as well?
I can't speak for the board. My recommendation as a finance director would be to do this, follow along the same lines that we're doing with these projects, yes.
And again, if you would, just illuminate for me and the public out there, too, why we're only using Anzo Colony Properties to do the entire projects. I mean, the county's got properties out there that are not encumbered, is that correct?
You've got to keep in mind, we've put quite an investment into our government center, our, you know, airport terminal, we have quite a few new assets, but really, we were very, there was not much investment into the infrastructure on the county side for quite a while, so a lot of the properties that have been built are brand-new, and they've already used, been used as collateral for, for the deals to be able to get our financing in place. So really, if a place, if a property is already up, is being used for collateral, we can't go plug that property and use it for collateral for another deal. So, so we really don't have much options, other than, you know, with the, with the projects we have coming up.
And parking lots and properties that have just parking lots on them are not, you can't put those, you don't get as much out of them as collateral unless you're going to build on them.
Exactly.
And build an infrastructure to build a tax base with it.
Exactly, and again, and why we're doing it structurally, and keep in mind, if we did them separate, yes, we could do them separate, then we'd be using Richlands Elementary as collateral, and then we'd just do the courthouse separate, but again, it just emphasized we'd be paying much more in financing cost, and, and I can't speak for the LGC, but I know they would probably come to us and say, look, if these deals are coming together at the same time, you really should bring them together under one umbrella. You know, that, that would be more than likely the recommendation, if they're going to be a month or two apart, like, it appears they will be, they would more than likely, again, can't speak for them, but my experience with them in the past is they would want us to combine the deals, just for the reasons I'm speaking to, double, you're paying twice the financing cost, and, and you're, you get more efficiency of scale, and when you go to the market with a larger deal, you're going to, underwriters are lining up investors to buy your bonds, the county, the lofts, you have a little more negotiating power to be able to maybe get a little bit better deal.
On the Meadowview property that we did back in May, has that already gone to the local government commission as well?
Well, that, that's already been executed, the whole deal. That's the one where I was saying we had a present value savings of around 3.2 million
What was the maximum that ultimately was on that one, then? I mean, the original documentation, although we were only going for 36 million, had a max that we could go for as 100 million. Did we have to lower that threshold as well?
We, we didn't borrow, it wasn't 100 million that we borrowed.
No, I know that we didn't borrow that, but that's what the document said, that we could go up to a maximum with.
Again, without having the documents in front of me, all I can allude to is, we wouldn't want to borrow, you know, we're refinancing, so we're looking to get savings, so it wouldn't make sense to go out and borrow 100 million, because you're not going to, because then you're going to be paying even more in interest. What we're looking to do is just...
It wouldn't make any sense, except, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
If, if you went to 100 million, let's say they would loan us 100 million, or we'd get bonds rated at 100 million for that project, I think we've got about 12 million in the Meadowview project with what we've currently got, and I think we had 36 that we were going out for a maximum, 36 at that particular time, but if we had that additional leeway in there, if they were going to loan us up to 100 million, that's what the original document said, that we approved back in May 12th, would we not then be able to draw upon additional projects from that document?
I had to look at the documents, because this was more looking at it from a savings perspective, not, not to build a project, or anything along those lines, so, and those deals are bundled together, you know, you have, they're intertwined with some other financings that, that were, you know, I have to go back and look at my, my notes on that, but you've got to keep in mind, they're bundled with other, other financings that we did. We kind of brought the lofts financing together, and a GO, a GO refinancing, too. They were two separate deals, but we were looking to get, like, the savings I was speaking to, we wasn't looking at it from a construction perspective.
Sure.
So now, I might be talking outside of my, my scope in terms of a legal perspective, but you're combining these deals together, and there's a lot of legal things, with these three projects that we're doing, they're all interconnected, in a sense, and, and it makes more sense, and it makes more practicality to just bring them together and have them separate from the documents that you're speaking to that were, I guess, back in May was.
But the bottom line is by bundling, you're saving money.
Oh, yes, we are, we are.
Gentlemen, I appreciate the conversation, I know that y'all are having a real good one, and there's going to always be time for that, but let's go back to the real item that's here, and if there are any other questions about that, we need to ask those now, any comments?
No more for me, thank you, David.
Good questions and good discussion.
I'd just like to thank the county commissioners for taking another bold step in moving the Richlands Elementary School forward, and I heard on, during the meeting on August the 17th, as well as tonight, saving money for the taxpayer, and we're getting, replacing two old schools as quickly as possible, so again, I applaud the county commissioners for their, their vision and taking the bold step, but thank you very much.
Thank you, you and your group for your work, and the county commissions for stepping it up. We're going to get it soon than we expected.
Exactly.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, thank you.
One thing I would like to mention, I know Mr. McCole did mention that LGC did, did give approval for the financing for the Dixon Middle School project going forward. What that means is, remember our last set of meetings and stuff, we also awarded a bid to Clancy and Thay's Construction to do the Phase 2 of the Dixon Middle School project. It was contingent on the LGC approval, so with that approval, now we, we will be able to go forward with the project. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Moxley and Mr. McCole for coming, appreciate it. Mr. Irwin, you're up next on some policies.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chair, members of the board, there are two policies before you this evening. The new policy is the voter, student voter registration, and it was introduced at your last board meeting in August, and it's a short policy, it just requires the principal to have the registration applications for students so that they can register to vote, and it's before you, for your approval to vote on tonight if you're so inclined.
You have a motion that we approve the policy regulation change?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Chair, the next policy is revisions to the graduation requirements, it's policy 3460, and specifically, this policy changes the requirements for the research project, the graduation project, to be five to seven pages, as opposed to eight to 10, and so that is reflected here in this policy, and if the board is so inclined to adopt this amendment to this policy, this eight to 10 pages is reflected in another policy, student progression in placement, that's policy 3420, so we would ask that if you approve this change, that you would also likewise approve the technical change to policy 3420, so they will be consistent. So instead of it, the graduation project being from eight to 10 pages, it will be five to seven. And going on with the rest of the project, you'll see some strike-throughs on page one, and, and then you'll see some additions on page two. The additional language in red just indicates that the minimum requirements now in math and a second language is required for students attending the UNC system universities, and then the same language is struck through because it's placed within the course requirements above, and then on page three, it's the same, the same information provided about the math, the four math courses and the two years of a second language, and then you'll see strike-throughs at the bottom of page three and the entire page four, and part of page five, and that's because those requirements were for students entering school prior to 2009, so those students have already gone through our system and no longer subject to the course requirements, and so that policy, this policy would have no application for them. And as you continue on page six, there's another additional mandate to the principal to make sure that students and parents are fully aware of the graduation requirements, and that the principal should be aware also of transfer of students in determining which courses will be given credit towards graduation, and the rest of the policy, with the exception of an additional graduation certificate on the very last page, the, there's a global language endorsement, as well as the career and college endorsement, and then there's a addition with the graduation certificate for those children in the exceptional children's program. So those are the technical changes, and most importantly, for those that do the research papers, the mandate for the paper is five to seven, as opposed to eight to 10. Make sure everybody knows that.
Do you have a motion to approve the graduation requirement changes in policy 3460, as well as the technical changes for 3420, to align those two?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion, second. Any comments or questions?
Yes, ma'am, my dear. That's a, page six of the local graduation requirements is the graduation project, that's something that we can determine here locally. As I've mentioned before, I'm very concerned that we're lowering our standards. The state required us to lower the grades from a, down to a 10-point grading system. We're taking this upon ourselves to do this. Now, I've heard some people say that a five-to-seven-page paper, if it's cogently written, is probably better than eight-to-10 page, it's not. I agree with that. The problem that I have with this is that I think we're sending the wrong message. I think any senior graduating should be able to write eight-to-10 pages. Eight-to-10 pages is not excessive, in my opinion, for a research paper that they have several weeks, if not several months, to compile and put together. Now, I know it's, I'm probably not going to be real popular with all those out there that have to do that, but that's my opinion. I really believe that we shouldn't lower it down to a five-to-seven, we're almost cutting it in half. The maximum before was 10, now we're bringing it down to five. I just have a major objection to that.
Other comments?
I've had the opportunity to participate in a number of presentations presented by the seniors, many, many of the high schools, and I've read the papers, their term papers, and their research and so forth. Personally, I do not see it as lowering the standard. I think the students need to learn how to write a paper and write it well, and meet all the guidelines as we used to have to do back in high school days, but something about Shakespeare back in, when I was in 11th grade, just didn't really turn me on. However, I still read the paper, sorry, Ms. Ethan, but I know you're an English teacher, but picking a topic that really, that I was able to connect to, and also write a paper, meeting all the guidelines and expectations and all the rules and so forth, I think the students will continue to do a good job, but it's that research and benefiting from that research and the presentation itself, it's all part of a package, and the paper is just an important part of, and I hope the students will understand that, because when they get out of high school, guess what? It's writing, writing, and writing. So it's, it's very important that they learn those skills now, along with the presentations and all the research, so I understand Mr. Williams' concern there, but I totally, certainly support these changes.
I think what you're going to find, and I was a math guy, but although that, that is a minimum, and you're going to find that most seniors can't say what they need to say in five pages, guys, so you, it's going to continue to be seven, eight, nine pages or more. I just don't see them being able to be so concise with five, the page number doesn't bother me. I think they're going to be fine, and seniors are going to continue to go well over that number.
I also agree with what Mr. Williams has brought forward. I can understand his point of view as well, and having been, as Mr. Taylor has indicated, one of those who judge the senior projects, and also having been a guardian who's had to motivate the student to be proactive in getting started on that graduation project, and the amount of assistance that was received after-school hours by faculty and staff to make sure the citations and everything was done correctly with his or her project, I think that we still will find that we will produce quality students, and they will still be successful in their writings, so, you know, I understand everybody's concern, but I do believe that we're still going to succeed, be successful in this.
Any other questions?
And as far as all the other changes, that's pretty much state mandated.
If there are no other comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
This leads us to the second public comment session, this is a time that anyone may speak on anything that is under the control of the board. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Yes?
Regarding the content, the number of pages, I had a senior who had to do...
Would you mind coming to the podium, please? And normally, we, you do have to sign up ahead of time, and I'm going to make an executive decision and let you speak, because we should have done that.
Thank you.
We don't have a big audience.
I had a senior who was responsible to do a senior project, and he complained about the number of pages that he had to write on his project, and because he had to do so many, he had to go back there and do more research, and through that, he got a well-rounded project, so I appreciate it, and I was right there with him, because I'm an English major, and I was right there with him, helping, and it made him go back and do more work. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any others? I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I expect Mr. Wiggins to say no sometime, because he tries to do that.
We're just having such a good time.
This meeting is adjourned, you have a great evening, thank you for coming, and be safe.